All right. Welcome, everybody. Good evening. We're here at the Town Board of the Town of Austin, regular meeting for Tuesday, December fourteenth, twenty twenty-one. Please rise and join me for the Pledge Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag. For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Thank you. My squeaky and my chair that's sinking. Okay, here I go. I'm sinking. I'm melting. Okay, I'm sorry, everybody. I've got a challenging chair here. A challenging chair situation. Please forgive me. Oh, my goodness gracious. Okay.
Um, Councilmember Feldman.
Present.
Councilmember Meyer. Councilmember Shaw.
Present.
Councilmember Wiltshire. And Supervisor Levinburne.
I am here in squeaking and shrinking. And we're gonna start off with some announcements. Maybe some of you heard, last Friday, Governor Hokel announced a new mask mandate requiring masks to be worn by all individuals in indoor spaces who do not have a vaccination mandate. In other words, if the space does not have a vaccination mandate. The case numbers are ticking up in our area, and that is not welcome news. I can tell you firsthand that that is happening here as well as every place else. And it's certainly not a good thing as we're approaching the Christmas and New Year's holiday. So please get vaccinated if you have not done so already. Get boosted if you have not done so already, and it's been six months since you received your last dose of an mRNA vaccine or two months since you received the Johnson and Johnson. We're much better off than we were a year ago, but it is important to stay vigilant and do the tried and true things like masking and vaccination that have helped us all along the way. So there's currently eighty-two active cases in Austin Village, up from fifty-six a week ago, which is a huge percentage jump. Eighteen in Town of Austin, up from thirteen a week ago, and nineteen in Ryer Cliff Manor, which is up from sixteen a week ago. And some better news, our vaccination numbers have also increased to seventy-seven point one percent of those in one oh five ten area code who are fully vaccinated, which is up from seventy-five point two percent a week ago, and seventy-seven point seven percent in one oh five six two area code who are fully vaccinated, and that's up from seventy-six point six percent a week ago. So please take precautions now so we can hopefully avoid a large wave of cases around the holidays. In our senior nutrition program, we will be shifting to take home lunches starting later this week. That way, our seniors can still get out of the house and socialize, but that will help us limit mask-free time during meals, which our chief of Ovac has reiterated is sort of like the most dangerous times, those meal times when we're sitting around a table together. Without our masks, obviously. If you're in a position to do so, please consider helping your neighbors, our neighbors in need by donating to one of the many organizations in Austin sponsoring holiday drives. The Baker Collier Christmas Cheer Fund is collecting donations for its one hundred and sixth year to ensure that everyone has something to eat on Christmas. You can donate online at thebakercollier, C-O-L-L-Y-E-R, Christmas Cheer Fund, that's all one word, dot com. Two of our local businesses, Mike Risco Music and a Taste Table, are hosting drop-off boxes for the O-Prime hat and glove drive now through tomorrow, December fifteenth. Mike Risco Music is also offering the opportunity for someone who would greatly benefit from music lessons but isn't able to afford them right now to receive six months of music lessons for free. Submit their story by December thirty-first to mikebrisco musicschool.com for a chance to win. Neighbors Link is collecting winter clothes for workers and toys for kids. The links to the wish lists were included in my supervisor's update last week, and items can be brought to their Mount Kisco or Austin locations. The Austin Boat and Canoe Club Toy Drive has many participating locations this year, including but not limited to Penny and Tings, Value Drugs, Fred's Auto Repair, Ovac, and many more. But the last day for dropping off gifts is Thursday, December sixteenth. It is always so heartwarming to see the Austin community really come together during the holidays to make sure everyone has the opportunity to fully enjoy the many gifts of the holiday season. The Austin Schools are holding their second annual Winter Wonderland at the OHS parking lot this Friday, December seventeenth, from four to six P M. So please come and join in the fun with special guests, giveaways, carolers, and much more. On Saturday, December eighteenth, at seven P M. and eight thirty P M., Westchester Collaborative Theater will continue to celebrate its reopening with a special holiday concert by the very wonderful and local Austin's own KJ Dinner. The performance will combine holiday themes and new material from Dinner's latest shows. We love KJ. We feel so blessed that she's one of our own, so grab your tickets at www.wctheater.org. Finally, as a follow-up to a discussion we had at work session a few weeks ago, the public comment period on the draft Westchester County Hazard Mitigation Plan is ending this week on December seventeenth. So please take some time to review and comment on the draft plan at westchesterhmpforhazardmitigationplan.com. Once the draft is finalized at the county level, the Town Board will also be adopting this plan so we can qualify for hazard mitigation grant funding. That is it for me. Do any of my board colleagues have anything to add?
Um, I think that we're gonna continue picking up the toys until Saturday, the eighteenth. Um, toy pick. It's been so warm out that really people haven't been shopping as often as they normally do. So the toy drive has been going pretty slowly. So if anybody wants to add to that or any of the boxes, that would be great.
Wonderful. Thank you for that. And please for me to fall down. Okay, thank you so much. And so extended, and that was when Councilwoman Feldman said we, I believe she meant OBCC, which is the boat.
Yeah.
All of those.
Sorry.
And find Austin.
I wear so many hats.
I think their Facebook page, I think we also shared all the other locations on our Facebook page and also on other social media. I think the villages shared it out and town. So you can find all the different places where they're collecting them, those sites. And I think that's it. So with that, if, are there any liaison reports from my colleagues? And yes, no? No. I think, well, did you want to mention, I mean, I think Bob Fritsch was recognized by Senator Elijah Raich Melnick as one of the firefighter.
Heroes. He, one of the heroes, first responder heroes, yes.
Yes, first responder hero, so.
At for for his role as a in the fire department since nineteen seventy-nine and all of the leadership roles he has assumed since then in the Westchester County Fire Convention and all of it. So, yeah, he's pretty amazing. So we're proud.
Congratulations to Bob. All right. So with that, we are going to get into some of our departmental reports. And this evening, we are going to be starting off with our building inspector, Mr. John Hamilton. Welcome.
Good evening. I, as usual, keep it very short. I just want to say that for the year, which has almost come to a conclusion, we issued about eight hundred and thirty-six permits so far. Our revenue line is about eighty percent higher than what we budgeted for. So we're, we're really moving along. I have a couple of things that I've brought with me on planning board issues, just to keep you up to speed. River Knoll is still working on their draft environmental impact statement. Summers Town Road, eighty-three. They, they dropped about two hundred yards of sand right next to the pond. They wanted to make a pond there, a little pool area there. Unfortunately, when we went downstream, we found the sand all the way down into the streams as well. So we've issued a stop work and a violation notice there. We've sent them to the planning board. I think they come this week. I'm not sure. Planning board agendas. I've had two silt fences put up just to try to hold it back because it's on a decline towards the pond. And I, I've indicated to the planning board that it is my hope that they talk with the engineering and discuss the possibility of dredging this out. Because there's a significant amount has gone into this pond, which, as I said, is now going downstream. So I will leave that in the hands of the planning board, along with their engineers and probably Environmental Advisory Board to come up with a solution to solve this. Borrego Solar at St. Augustine's, they're just coming back for a very minor amendment on their footprint, and they should be good to go. We're gonna have a new home on McCarthy Drive that was approved. On Stormy Town Road, that thirty-nine Stormy Town nine lots were approved. They haven't submitted their building permit yet. And at five ninety-three North State, the plumbing facility, they were finalized and approved. They haven't come to me yet. And at five forty North State Road, that commercial building there, they are doing some renovations, and they're gonna be submitting a building permit to me. They just came out of planning. Terra Rustica's building permit was approved for them to expand on that deck on the property. They came in and asked if they could use that little triangular section of their land to have temporary parking. They wanted to level it out, put some item four down to have parking there while they work on the deck area because they'll shut down some of their parking in the front. I've advised them that I can't approve that, that they're gonna have to go to planning if they want to do it because this abuts a residential area, and they'd have to show us how they're gonna handle the noise, the lights, and any other issues that might arise out of that. I think based on that, they, I think they indicated they're going to withdraw that and not, and not go any further with that. The Learning Center is the never-ending saga. I try to work with them. They're trying to get a whole of engineers and things that we need done. So hopefully, within the next month or so, we can get them going. Park Knolls, Christie sent over today the paperwork on affordable housing, and we might be ready for a final C O on Building One. I have to check with engineering and planning to make sure all their conditions are met and all accounts are up to snuff as far as payment as well. So it's busy. We're handling a lot of stuff. I go out and I bring a trainee with me. And we're moving along.
That's a little bit later in our agenda, that training.
I couldn't help but notice. But we're moving along, a lot of work. And starting in January, we do it all over again with do all the accessory apartment inspections, the fire inspections, all that good stuff, but we'll handle it. So that's all I have.
You're doing a great job, and we very much appreciate all the hard work.
Well, it's a team.
It's a great team. Doing a good job. Thank you so much. Any questions from my board colleagues? We appreciate the, the heads up on that, on that sand issue and working together to figure out a solution.
Yeah, I think I included you on the pictures. I don't remember.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's a mess.
It's a mess.
Hopefully, we'll get it taken care of.
How far down did it get? How far downstream did it get to Brooklyn?
I went down about maybe seven or eight houses, and we saw it in the, in the stream. So I don't know how much further that was a week ago. So I don't know how much further down. We've been working with their architect, who will now be working with the planning board. I, all I wanted to do was temporarily get up the silt fences to stop any more from coming in and then turn it over to the engineers and planning and see what they want to do. But I hope that they come up with an answer to dredge it.
And Park Knolls has residence now.
Yes, they're on a temporary C O, and they do have residence in that building one.
Okay, because I met one. Who was very happy to be there.
Good. Good. It's, it's coming along. I mean, we've been in there. Dana came in with us. It's really a nice looking facility.
Yeah, I did mean to go see it before it got rented. Oops.
Anyway, it looks good. Well, the other building is still under construction, so that won't be rented out for a while if you want to look at that one.
Great. I think I would. Thank you.
Okay.
Awesome. Well, thank you very much. I think that that's all we need you for this evening, unless you feel like staying on for later in the agenda.
You know, that's all right. I, I, I have to take care of the dogs.
Okay, well, thanks, John, and.
Everybody have a happy, healthy holiday season. Merry Christmas. Happy Hanukkah. Happy Kwanzaa. Be careful and be safe.
Same to you.
Thank you.
Happy holidays.
Good luck, Mr. Wiltshire. You did.
Thank you, John.
Thank you. So long.
And next up in our departmental reports this evening, we have our crack engineering team or dynamic duo of Paul Frioli and Andy Tease. There are a lot of projects underway and in planning, and especially as the weather has stayed mild for December, we've gotten lucky and squeezed in a few extra weeks on some of the major road infrastructure projects we have going at McCarthy and Morningside Drive. I think we're gonna be hearing from Paul first. Is that right? And take it away, Paul. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. So the primary projects that I've been working on this year that have both got well into the ground from the design phases and are nearly complete are the McCarthy Drive project and the Morningside and some tributary road rehabilitation. I'll start off with McCarthy Drive. McCarthy Drive. Before I give you the update on where we are, I want to recognize Victoria Capirelli because she keeps the residents on McCarthy Drive and some of the surrounding houses updated at least bi-weekly, but sometimes more often than that is necessary with an email blast that we created very early in the project. And God knows we've needed it, especially in this last couple of months, because there's been plenty of hiccups that we've hit out there in large part due to the coordination with the three utility companies, that being Con Edison, Altice, and Verizon. So we're working through that, but I will tell you that it hasn't been easy. And it's really a combination of a lot of issues, but really is the it's the result of a project like that being done void of the planning board approval process, I guess, is the simplest way of putting it. So we're taking, we're taking something and making it right, and it's always harder to do that retroactively. It's almost like rehabilitating your home versus new construction. Everyone that's tried it knows that rehabbing is tougher than new. So that's what we're experiencing now, but we will get there, and I'm confident that the residents are gonna be very happy with the finished product. So with that in mind, let me give you some more details. This week, we are actually putting down the base course of material, which would be the layer underneath the binder course of Blacktop, which is the last course that goes on prior to the top course, which is what we all drive on now, which is the top course of Blacktop. The reason we needed to do all that is because we literally pulled out about a foot of material that was unsuitable in depth, that was unsuitable to build a road to the town specifications. So the things we added to that unsuitable road were concrete curbs, a drainage system designed around a hundred-year flood mitigation, and that includes detention and treatment from the McCarthy Drive proper all the way down through incognito and how on some of the drainage shed goes out to Stormy Town Road. The most, the single most important part of a proper road construction is proper drainage, and now we have it. So the drainage is done. The village partnered with the town in this project in that they took a water main that gave the water department fits for the last twenty to thirty years because it was in unsuitable material. We had many breaks in this ductile iron pipe. So now it is new ductile iron pipe for the full length of McCarthy Drive, and everybody has a new service connection as well. So we didn't want to build a new road and leave the old water main in there, which is subject to breaking, where we would have to been digging through the road. There is no gas on the road, but there is electric and there is cable. So those two utilities needed to be relocated as well, and it's that relocation and that work that was done primarily by the contractor, I'm sorry, by the utility companies that caused some of the delay that I think you've noticed by now, because last time I reported to you, we were, we were expected to have the binder course on by now. So the binder course really isn't going on to the later part of this week. We're gonna get everybody's front yard buttoned up and the transition into their driveways buttoned up. And at that point, they'll have a very, you know, pleasant experience going to and from their homes through the winter. The utility companies have already indicated that they may be in there this winter doing some work, which is better than telling us next winter that they want to go in there and do work, which has happened before, as you know. But we're gonna hopefully avoid that by letting them get everything they need to get done, done. And that will be in advance of the top course of pavement. So once they're done and the road is reestablished as a complete contiguous base, we will put the top course on. We will finish the detention system that was constructed at the end of McCarthy between the town's right-of-way of McCarthy and incognito. The patch restoration on incognito for the drain system for their detention system that was installed will also be finished. And everybody's front yard in the spring, where it's now backfilled and graded, will be fine graded with topsoil and seeded. And all the landscape details that they had there pre-construction will be recreated as we discussed individually with each of thirty-two homes post-construction. Very logistically challenging project. The aforementioned house from John Hamilton, that's being built there actually served as a staging area that was just luck that the contractor was able to negotiate a a deal with that property owner. And where he was with the application process afforded us the ability to use that area as a mobilization area, which really limited the interference that we had with other, other private properties on that street. But again, I think that once this project is complete, the the neighborhood's gonna take on a different, a, a, a different scene there. The, the, the road and the curb and everything else that we do for these homes is really gonna make a drastic aesthetic change in that neighborhood, and I think they're all gonna realize that and be happy that the town took that road over and decided to not take it over piecemeal and rebuild it the right way. So I'm happy about that. Financially, we're still in a good place right now. I've been back and forth with the town's comptroller to talk about how we're gonna finish, and I still believe we're gonna finish within budget and and that includes biting into some of the contingency, but that remains to be seen. There's still some work that we have to iron out with the utility companies. Morningside, Morningside.
Before it gets more inside, so I just want to thank all of the neighbors for their patience, and like you said, they're gonna, I think, I agree with you, they're gonna be extremely happy once this is done, but there have been a lot of stumbles, many of them, I think, really having to do with the utility companies not doing what they needed to do. And then the other thing that I, I wanted to mention was that what was the other thing I wanted to mention? There was something else that you mentioned. Anyway, just, you know, I think that, oh, that, that I wanted to thank you for, you know, dealing, getting the weather, ordering up the weather for us for these last couple of weeks. Paul, I think that was really helpful. And we'll be hopefully ready for, you know, any snow events that happen as a result of getting that binder course down. So that's, that's, that's really great.
Yeah, I, yeah, let me add this. I wrote it in my notes, and I skipped over it because they're sloppy. I did want to thank the residents because for the most part, I'll say, they've been very extremely patient. And that's, that's important on a project like this. It's, 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 it makes it that much easier because they really are being put through a year of inconvenience. But again, the end result will prove very beneficial to them.
And they were the ones who came to us asking us to do this in the first place, just to, just to go back and remind everybody. But the, the other thing I want to mention is that, you know, if anybody thinks that it's not gonna continue to be a cul-de-sac and that we've now created a through road, that's not true. That's all gonna be closed back up again, right? So you just can clarify that a little bit for the.
Yes, we, because of the restrictions of the right-of-way as they were surveyed, we were, we were not able to create a true cul-de-sac. So we created what they call a hammerhead at the end of the road, which is basically we widened all the way out to the right-of-way at the end of the road in both the left and right side of the road, and created almost like a a widened, fattened area of the road at the end that'll allow for most cars to make a, you know, to turn around in one motion. But larger vehicles will have to do it like a three-point U-turn, but they can do it orders of magnitude easier than they could before we did this project, which I remind you, that last couple hundred feet of road wasn't even paved prior to this project. It was basically item four material, which did not bode well for your travel experience down there or drainage or anything else. There's, there's, there's so many collateral benefits that came, are coming out of doing this road on top of just the pavement facet. So, yeah, it was a good project. It's not one of, it's, it's kind of like, it's kind of like synonymous with Old Albany Post Road where that road was basically falling down the cliff and we spent, but we'll get reimbursed eventually from FEMA, right, Dale? We spent over a million dollars to benefit, I think, twelve homes. But the long last, the lasting impact that it has on those homes, which essentially can now remain as private, you know, taxable homes is, is a great benefit and very worthwhile project there, too. We're not getting any FEMA money for this one, but still a worthwhile project. And thank the residents again. Any questions about that?
This is a lot more homes, and also, like you mentioned, the drainage issues are gonna hopefully help the homes on the neighboring streets as well.
They will. They will. They will. They, they've already helped with what we've done already on the homes on incognito and Knollwood. And, and, and you'll see, it's, it's only gonna get better when the full system is in and everything's collected on the road. Once it's paved and everything is directed to the catch basin. Are there any questions on McCarthy before I jump to Morningside? Seeing nobody raising their hand, I will jump to Morningside. So Morningside, as you know, was something that we were talking about trying to get in this year with the money that was set aside in your capital budget and then some chips money, I think, we're using for this too, but I'll defer to Dale on that.
Money and grant money.
Yep, yep. Yes, we got grant money too.
From Sandy Gale, multimodal.
Yep, and I think that was one hundred and fifty thousand. Sound right? To go towards that?
I'm twenty.
So essentially, we cut two different P O's from the villages and towns annual bid contract documents. It was a P O for concrete contractor who installed. We made the decision at the time because of the nature of the road and the drainage necessary around the areas of Morningside, I guess I'll call it west of Ryder Avenue, that we would put concrete curbs on the east side of Morningside coming from Byer Cliff. And we did that. And then was another area near the park where we wanted to put concrete curbs because there was already concrete curbs on that end. So essentially, the concrete money was spent on that part of Morningside. When you jump over to the other side of Ryder, the lots are a little different. They're offset, and there's some catch basins off into the shoulder. And we thought it better suited for milling and paving, but not necessarily a concrete curb detail. So we didn't install in there. And the other part that we're gonna pave is Morningside Court, and they already have concrete curves. And we're gonna mill there, too. What we decided to do when we started this project, so we didn't get cute with the weather and push our luck, was just to get the one half done. So we milled, and now we're paving Morningside right now, right on the heels of the concrete work getting completed. And I'm gonna say they got about thirty percent done, maybe forty percent done with the paving today. Spoke with the contractor this evening, and he hopes to get it done tomorrow. It may roll into Thursday. We will see. At that point, we're gonna look at the weather forecast into the following two weeks to see if we want to venture into the remainder of Morningside out to Newcastle and Morningside Court. They're all written up on the same P O, so it's all in the money that's already allotted for this project. If, in fact, we don't feel that it's proper to start this project because we might not have weather on our side, then we will put it off, keep the P O open, and just roll the capital project into twenty twenty-two using the same unit price numbers. And the town and village annual bid contract is a two-year. And the town and village annual bid contract is a two-year contract, as you know, so those numbers are held. Um and and then we can, and we can talk about where we are with other roads at that time too. But right. Highway superintendent Connolly already spoke with the um annual bid painting and lining contractor. So right on the heels of the paving being completed, hopefully in the next couple of days. There will be a double yellow line installed on that road and fog lines installed. Along the curb line. If you want a uh uh something to give you an idea of the uh what we're looking to create there, it's what we have in the village on Underhill. That fog line detail. Fog lines really work well, particularly on roads that don't have um a lot of lighting on them. And it helps to um, you know, the um. Indicate where where the curves are and it also does a lot to improve speed, safety. It gives the impression of a compressed lane width, which makes people slow down. Uh when they're driving, most people. Um and that's that. That's that. I think that, again, that's gonna be another nice project, which does um, it's a big boost for not just the aesthetics, but really just like, just like uh. Mornings, just like McCarthy, it does a lot for um not just curb appeal, but for home value as well when you do stuff like this to the road.
Hey, I I bumped into uh one Mateo Valardo, I guess he was working for Rinaldi. And um he mentioned to me that I think it was twenty, it's been twenty-three years since that road was paved.
Yeah, and I think when it was paved, it was also paved as an overlay. It was not paved as a milling pave. So you basically paved over a. Compromised road to begin with, and that's doesn't really, that's really not the best way to do it. And it's also some of the reason we had some of the drainage problems coming off and working their way off the road is because the elevation changed to catch, catch bases were not being met. Um you know, we, we didn't just, we didn't just pave here. We put, we put new concrete curbs and directed them into um not only. Better into the existing catch basins, which we cleaned out and reset to the proper grade, but we added three. Catch basins to the system. Um to catch the, catch the water and get it underground as fast as we can. That's the key to a good uh road project and a good paving project is. To catch that drainage and get it under the ground to the stormwater pipes and out to the receiving body, wherever that is.
And we have a very busy park there and we also have our um park um shop there as well as a nursery school right across the street. So it's a pretty, it's a pretty hectic road. A lot of people use it. Um I I don't know how we're gonna keep people to slow, slow down, but um. We're gonna have to.
One thing I will, I mean, I don't wanna, I don't wanna get too much detail in just a general public meeting, but one thing you might consider is. Um you know, some enhanced signage there. Now that you have it, you can put um, you could put recommended speed reductions. Um because you're coming from one municipality into yours at, at the Pleasantville Road and uh Chapacor Road interface there. You might want to reestablish the speed limit for the, the town of Austin is thirty miles an hour there and just post it in a large sign. And then, you know, you can also put recommended reduced yellow speed signs um around some of those bends and what have you.
Right. Yeah, that's a good idea. Definitely. Fantastic. Alright.
But before I, I, I'm sorry, if I, I'd be remiss if I didn't. Thank Northern.
Uh oh, we're losing you right at the important part, Paul. Check in.
I do the village, but probably my two main village projects in my tenure here. Were the Kilbrook Walkway and the Double Arch Reconstruction. And and Northern was um a great asset to have in those projects. He was a. Many hats, inspector, confidant. Security guard.
The watch, no.
Yeah, so I, I, I remember those days fondly and I'm looking forward to doing more projects with you in the mix and good luck to you. Good luck to you and and thank you for the years of support.
Thank you, thank you.
Awesome. Uh any questions for our uh village slash town engineer, Paul Fraley? Any, anybody on the board have questions?
I have, I have one question. Uh on uh. At there near the nursery.
Norning side.
Morningside, we, we're not allowed to put a speed bump. On the road or we have to get state do that or what?
We don't have to get the state, but we might have to follow our.
Speed bumps, speed bumps are um. Um there's much deliberation on the effectiveness of speed bumps and the. Potential liability associated with speed bumps and and other things like that. But that's something we can talk about, but it's not just gonna be an engineering decision. I think, I think uh that's gonna require. Counsel, supervisor, police input.
Okay.
But I will, from my position, I will state that uh. I think enforcement's always the best way because uh speed bumps have um. Other issues associated with them, including maintenance and snow plowing and things like that. I know other places have them. Um but I just think that uh. There's other ways to get people to drive properly.
Councilman Goucher, we did put temporary ones in, in, in the park at Ryder. I will tell you that, the ones that are the removable ones. So. That's hopefully been helpful. I think we actually need a few more, but um we did put them there when we repaved. I also wanted to mention that for all this curbing, we did use the low carbon concrete. So this was like probably the first. Big, big project that we did that with. Are you muted or?
You're beautiful.
Oh, you're muted.
Sorry, sorry for not mentioning that. Um it's what's known, it's really, it's, it's really working its way into marketplaces last year. It's what they're calling a. Green concrete. Uh we did pay a slight increase per guard for that, or per foot actually. Is uh what the unit price bid was for the concrete curbs. But um I think on the scheme of the project was nominal and it's, it was the right thing to do. So I'm looking forward to doing a little bit more of that in the future.
Is there a different technique that needs to be used with that?
No, it's the, the, and I don't fully understand it, so I'm not gonna try to. Um pretend that I do. It has to do with uh the, the collection of the raw material for the concrete. It's not so much what they do in the field. It's what they do to create the. Cement dust. So it's really some, it gets, gets that classification in manufacturing or. Um mixing, not, not.
So um if everybody's done asking questions about morningside, I have an off-topic one.
For me?
Yeah.
Okay.
Or, or statement. Um so at the river, I know you're gonna go down with Dana and FEMA. And there is a new area that after Ira, um it must have washed out the substructure. Because there's a dip and a pond or every extra high tide or every rainstorm that was never there before. So. A lot of the substructure did wash out and I have a picture of the dip. I'm sure you can take one anytime though.
Yeah, is that it? So I was down there with um the parks foreman the other day. And we were just getting some rough numbers together for the FEMA application. And what I think. Happened there is, just like you said, the um the subbase of the road. They have washed out. I'm not completely certain that it's all um created from the surface. There might be some. You know, groundwater coming up through during high tide situations, because I know we have that. In the village a little bit. When we do some excavation and do some sanitary sewer repairs, we do notice that the uh. When the tide is up, we get water in the trench and it's, you know, something that we're gonna work around, but what I told. The supervisor and when we were doing this team, the uh initial. Meeting with FEMA was that we should put numbers in there for some drainage improvements, which we put to them. Um because just like I said, for the other roads, appropriate drainage and collecting any surface water before it has a chance to pool and. And flood the area, at least has a channel to. Leave the road and go back to its uh receiving body versus um washing in and out on the surface of the pavement. So. Yeah, I think um, I think we will end up pulling all that material out of there and starting from the subbase again, improving the drainage and then overlaying it.
Okay, and then um another thing to mention during the conversation is that when Harbor Square raised there, they used to be the lowest nominee. Everything would flow toward the Kilbrook. Um that's how it was always. And then when they raised that, we're getting a lot more flooding coming around. On both sides of the Harbor Square property um during these storms. So. That, that's a difference in, I don't know if FEMA cares about that, but it's a different water course um than it was historically.
I think we're going to have a meeting with FEMA. Um I, I think we talked about the beginning of the year, is that right, Victoria?
Yeah, I think in the new year, they want to come out for a site visit. So.
Yeah.
Um we haven't heard from them with, with dates yet, but you know, because this project is probably gonna be a mitigation project where we're looking to improve what was there. Before to make sure it doesn't happen in the future. It's gonna take a lot of steps before we, we get there with FEMA's involvement and Paul's and, you know. Everybody to make sure we're doing it the right way.
Alright, I didn't, I honestly didn't think that they were, they were scheduling site visits for. One hundred and fifty thousand or less projects, so they're small projects. I thought they were doing that via GIS and teleconference, but if they come out, I'll gladly. Help facilitate that.
It's also because it's an archaeologically sensitive area. And because um the boat canoe club is um listed, i- it's not listed, but it's a. Eligible, eligible to be on the historic register. Um so for that reason, and then there was an, and there was one other reason.
Well, I think also just because there, you know, because obviously New York was hit um very badly and during the, that tropical storm. I think they're just stationed here. You know, they're stationed in Manhattan. It sounds like some of the other people who are uh involved are in the area right now. So I think that's. They're trying to get some of those site visits complete since they're in the area dealing with um a whole bunch of. Issues that happened after that tropical storm. So it's not like everybody's based out of uh DC for this particular event.
Okay.
Alright.
Okay, yeah, I'm happy to be there if my schedule allow me to.
Okay, great. Um alright, so I think then we're going to turn it over to Mr. Andy Tease, our water superintendent and also our project manager on a variety of other projects.
Good evening, everybody. Um few projects that we're working on in the parks actually with the parks foreman, Mario. Um Cedar Lane Park, we met with Carrie and Walsh recently to provide a proposal for the art studio. Um we sized up the um air conditioning and heating required for the uh. The general public area, the, the large room. It would be uh three, two, three ton heat pumps at a cost of eighteen thousand. Six hundred and seventy-five dollars. So we have that as a budget. We also met with Con Ed to make sure that we have the right size um power requirements for that facility. And um they're working so sizing of transformers, sizing of wires. Um they're working with their engineering division, so I should have an answer within the next couple of weeks from Con Ed. Um we also met with the annual bidder, the uh electrical bidder, which is a contractor, PRM Electric. He provided a budgetary proposal of twenty thousand to um. Increase the amperage of that building from two hundred amps to four hundred amp service. That building is maxed out as far as electrical service wise, so that um that needs to be looked at. Um and completed if we move forward with this project. Um when Con Ed was on site and PRM was on site, we noticed some trees, dead trees that were laying against the service lines. Pretty dangerous situation. So Con Ed scheduled on December sixth with the Parks Crew and with the annual tree uh. Contractors to take these trees down. We did a, we did a shutdown, a scheduled shutdown and. That whole dangerous situation is out of the way. Um about a month ago, we met with the town supervisor and the budget officer. John Fry from Nexus Architects, Mario Valardo and myself to discuss upgrading building possibilities for. The old Parks Foreman's House at Ryder Park. We're looking at possible funding opportunities. We just, we're, we're trying to see if uh if it's worth um rebuilding. That building and it really, the outside is in bad shape, the whole envelope, the windows, the siding, the roofing. Uh a lot of work needs to be done with that. Um. And then obviously um I missed the last meeting, but I know Victoria Caffrelli was there for the kitchen at the community center. Um I spoke to John Fry tonight. He called me back because I'm working on a few projects with him. And um he had said that the equipment cost came in. So that, that's a project that's half funded by CDBG. Um by the, that whole funding source. It was a two hundred and seventy thousand dollar project. And the town had to match a hundred and thirty-five thousand of it. Um. And I know the equipment cost is like two hundred thousand and, and it's gonna be carved back a little bit, but I, I asked John point blank, I'm like. Before we move forward with the equipment, we just have to have an idea before we go out to bid with the actual construction cost. It's gonna be the mechanical, the electrical and so forth. So he's working on those numbers, but that's pretty important. Um we want to get going on that as soon as we get concrete numbers. And um finally, I want to wish Northern the best. Uh such a true gentleman uh always. Always gave support to Paul and I on all these projects and um. Great guy.
So, thank, thank you.
You're welcome. Any questions?
I also just want to mention before we ask any questions that the um, the project that Andy was talking about at the Cedar Lane Art Center, we are looking to have that. Be hopefully fully funded by our uh clean energy communities uh grant funding that we received. We have forty thousand dollars lined up. That's. Basically already allocated to the town. We just have to tell them nicer to how we want to spend the money. Um and it will actually help us in the future because we're making these uh, you know, energy efficient upgrades to one of our buildings and it's a public building. So that. Makes us eligible for even more things will hopefully get us um some more points uh towards that program in the future. Um yeah, so it's very.
And just to clarify that, here's the, you know, the heating cooling system is an air source heat pump. So that's the. Energy efficient part of it. And I think that we can consider it sort of a demonstration project to showcase that. Um particular type of heating and cooling, which is much more energy efficient than others.
And also because we do benchmarking at our, at, at our town-owned buildings, we're actually gonna be able to monitor and see how. The um like what the energy score is for that building once we make this improvement and are not paying for. Oil deliveries as frequently. Um so that's gonna be interesting to, to monitor and show how, how it can improve the energy efficiency of the building.
We don't have that many buildings to make more energy efficient. So when we do, it's, it's nice that.
Yeah.
Uh okay, any other questions for Mr. Tease? Or for Mr. Fraley?
One, one last thing I was gonna, uh just because we always talk about the new filter plant design and whatnot. So the filter, um. The health department, Westchester County Health Department has the filter plant design that they're uh reviewing for the UV system, the whole new water filtration. Plant. I spoke to the uh head um water quality engineer this week. And he promised me that uh they would be reviewing the final uh comments. Of the design of that filtration plant, a third week in January. Um and we would be looking to go out to bid for the new water filtration plant thereafter. Uh it's gonna be interesting how the numbers come in. That's gonna determine, you know, next steps, but. Um that's kind of hot off the press, so I figured I should tell you guys.
Great, thank you. And we determined we have not yet heard about our WIA grants, so our water infrastructure improvement um grants. We're still waiting to hear about. The North State Road Water Main that we applied for grant funding for. And that's also a project that, that Andy's overseeing.
Yeah, that would be a great opportunity. I mean, it, it's needed. We know how many water breaks we get out there. Um we've added multiple valves on that water main to try and reduce. Outages to certain restaurants, but the next step is the water main, just like Gordon Avenue and uh knock on wood. That's worked out well, so.
Restaurants and other businesses like.
Correct.
Who rely on that water for the showers, for example. I don't want all those stinky people running around town.
I have a childcare place. I'm pretty sure they need water.
And childcare, absolutely. Hundred percent. Uh okay, great. Thank you again for all those wonderful departmental reports. We really appreciate it. And. Let's see, do we have? A couple more? And let's see, do we have a couple more? I say we do. Because we have with us, I, so we're, we're good with you guys, but of course you could stay on and support your friend. Our wonderful comptroller Dale Brennan is here with our deputy comptroller Liz Nakari. And I'm going to toss it to Dale for an update, an end of year. Sum up and how are we doing? We've been seeing a lot of. Big checks come in. We do have a very large voucher detail tonight. I think it might be the largest for the year. So let you touch on that as well, hopefully, as well as where we are landing with the others. The other updates.
Thank you Supervisor Levinberg. Good evening, Town Board. So good to see you. It is kind of too early to call yet to determine where we'll be at year end. Because as you know, being practiced, board members, our voucher detail amounts. For the two thousand twenty-one year will go into, I always tell them I'm cutting you off at the end of February. But they generally go into March of, of the next year to really clean up and pay. All of our accounts payable items. So I will, I will hold the phone on where we are in expenses. But in terms of revenues, we did get a nice surprise when we received our second half. Mortgage tax amount coming in. I believe that lands tomorrow in our bank account. And so for the end of the year, for the general fund for mortgage tax where we had budgeted. Four hundred sixty-one thousand for the year, we're actually going to receive eight hundred and eighty-three hundred thousand. So that's going to come in at four hundred and almost twenty-two thousand over budget. So that will definitely help either our fund balance or to cover potential lines. That were over expended when we get to doing our budget adjustments to clean up the year end. For twenty twenty-one. The TOB Fund also receives a portion of the mortgage tax. Their budgeted amount is about eighty-five thousand for the year. And at the end of the day, they're going to receive about a hundred sixty-two thousand. So they'll be also over budget by a little more than seventy-seven. Thousand at year end. So definitely.
Over revenue budget. So that's always a good thing.
Yes, we, we like saying over budget when it's, when it's for our revenue. Sales tax is also on track. To come in higher than, than budgeted, but those quarters lag a bit. And so I don't want to get ahead of the game, but we will definitely. More than hit our budget amount for, for the current year. When I look at the expenses, we were right in line where we should be. So I'm not anticipating any problems occurring. Knock on wood. Part of the reason this voucher run was high. Among other things, trying to just clean up a lot of two thousand twenty-one. We also had our New York State Retirement. Invoice in for this run. We do pay it with the early option. Because it gives us a little bit of a discount. And as long as we're not having a cash flow problem, situation. Hindrance, let's say, going on, we do like to take advantage of, of paying it in December versus waiting till February. So that is part of. Probably a good portion of why your, your voucher detail report is, is higher than, than the norm. But the, but the town is very healthy and I anticipate we will, we will end the year when we get to audit in April. On, on a, on a high note. And I also do want to say thank you to Northern for many, many, many moons. I won't say how many, because that will just age, age me more than Northern, Northern never ages. And thank you for, for all your support and definite wisdom across, across those many moons. Much appreciated.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
So nice. And, and we thank you, comptroller Brennan, as well as our deputy comptroller Nakari. And also our budget officer, Victoria Cafarelli, for all the hard work. Working on the budget as well as our department heads, of course, to make sure that we are always keeping within the budget. And we also budget, we budget our revenue lines very conservatively. We know sometimes we, you know, we, we try to make sure that we don't budget too conservatively. So that we don't need to ever go above our tax cap, for example. But we definitely do budget those lines conservatively because you never know which way things are going to flow, especially in the middle of a pandemic. We really don't know. And you know, things change all the time as, as we all are seeing. And we're talking, we talked about earlier in my announcements, you know, things are ticking up, back up again, and we don't know how that's going to impact business. And you know, the. Supply chain shortages that we've been seeing have impacted, you know, our costs across the board. So we just never know. So it's better to go low on revenue and high on expenses. And, and be happy at the end of the year when we see some of these numbers come in. So we are very grateful. Dale, for all of your sage wisdom in that area. And I know that that's, you know, we always stick with that reasoning, I think.
That is correct. And I, and I think that everybody takes my, takes my two cents and, and goes forward.
Absolutely. Are there any questions for my board colleagues about any, anything finance related, anything at all?
As a grandbaby, no.
If questions about unicorns, that was the time.
Thank you for all that you do, Dale and Liz. I feel confident knowing that you're helping Victoria. And the rest of us get muddled through.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Our pleasure.
All right. Well, this was a power packed departmental report evening. And I want to thank you all for participating in it. And if you have more questions, we certainly know how to reach you. So thanks again. And I think at this point, we're going to open it up to public comment on agenda items only. And is there anybody in our public who would like to comment? So please raise your virtual hand. And seeing no virtual hands raised, I'm going to turn it over to Martha Kudisaka for our board resolutions. Take it away, Deputy Town Clerk.
Hi. Okay, approval of the minutes, regular meeting, November twenty-third, twenty twenty-one, resolved at the town board of the town of Austin. Hereby approves in November twenty-third, twenty twenty-one minutes of the regular meeting as presented.
Have motion.
Back in.
All those in favor? Anybody opposed?
Approval of voucher detail report resolved at the town board of the town of Austin hereby approves about to detail report dated December fourteen, twenty twenty-one. And the amount of one million two hundred fifty-five thousand eight hundred and thirty-five dollars and thirty-seven cents.
Do you have a motion? So as this is our last voucher detail report in twenty twenty-one, we do have a few big ticket items. And one of them, one of the biggest ones was mentioned, I think it was about, I want to say four hundred and forty-four thousand dollars for the pension fund. That upfront payment. And I know that we have a couple others, so I'm going to turn it over to Victoria Cafarelli to summarize some of the larger voucher items.
Yes, that was probably the largest ticket item in the voucher detail report. Had our December IMAs to the village. So those combined are, is about seven hundred thousand dollars. We also had our Medicare Part B payments, which we make twice a year to our retirees. So that covers six months of their Medicare Part B payments. It's about nine hundred dollars for each retiree and their spouse. We also had a payment to Monsanto Brothers for the McCarthy Drive project, which we talked about earlier. As well as some of our water bills for the parks, which included the summer months, which add up pretty fast. So we also did go three weeks without a check run prior to this check run. And we later on in the meeting, we do have a resolution to cancel our December twenty-eighth meeting. So we were trying to be proactive to make sure we covered a lot of the, the bigger items before the end of the year. Though, as our controller shared, we'll be seeing twenty twenty-one payments still for a couple more months. But trying to wrap things up. So it all added up pretty quickly. But if there are any other specific questions, I'm happy to answer them. Otherwise, that's it.
Any other questions? Or any questions? All those in favor? Anybody opposed?
Adoption of twenty twenty-two budget resolved at the town board of the town of Austin hereby approves the twenty twenty-two budget for the town of Austin. Total appropriations for the twenty twenty-two entire town one hundred fund are five million eight hundred and seventy-five thousand four hundred and forty-seven dollars. Total appropriations for the unincorporated two hundred area fund are four million one hundred and fifty-two thousand two hundred and sixty-four dollars. In total appropriations for the highway three ten found are two million eight hundred and eighty thousand eight hundred and forty-two dollars. Total appropriations for the water and sewer funds are four hundred and eighty-eight thousand and forty-one dollars. Total appropriations for the fire slash light slash refuse funds are one million five hundred sixty-three dollars. One million five hundred sixty-three thousand four hundred and one dollars. Total appropriation for the ambulance district are six hundred ninety-five thousand seven hundred and nine dollars. In total appropriation for the cemetery fund are three hundred fifty-four thousand four hundred and four dollars.
Motion? So once again, thank you to our comptroller Dale Brennan, our deputy comptroller Liz Nakari, our budget director Victoria Cafarelli. And all of our department heads on their great work developing the twenty twenty-two budget. Here in the town, we are lucky to have such dedicated public servants, always looking out for the community's best interests. And always looking to save a buck. We're all looking forward to starting another great year with a sound, responsible budget. And we really do think you get a great bang for your town buck here in town of Austin. Questions, discussion? Thanks again. All those in favor?
Stipulation of agreement, CSCA, be resolved that upon the recommendation of the town supervisor. The stipulation of agreement between the town, CSCA, local one thousand and Sandronelli is hereby ratified and approved.
Don't move. Second.
Yes, this is our trainee, our trainee with John Hamilton. All those in favor? Anybody opposed? Congratulations.
Stipulation of agreement, Teamsters, be it so resolved that upon the recommendation of the town supervisor. The stipulation of agreement between the town and IBT local four, five, six to add the title of assistant automobile mechanic to the bargaining union. And set the salary schedule for this title for twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three is hereby ratified and approved.
Motion?
Second.
All those in favor? Anybody opposed?
Inter municipal agreement, New York State Department Environmental Conservation Grant for Recycling App. Is all that the town board of the town of Austin authorizes the supervisor to sign the renewal of an inter municipal agreement for calendar year twenty twenty-one. With the Village of Terrytown and the following municipalities, City of New Rochelle, Town of Cortland, Town of Greenberg, Town of Harrison, Town of Austin, Village of Artsley, Village of Bronsville. Village of Allenford, Village of Hastings and Hudson, Village of Irvington, Village of Amerenang, Village of Pelham and the Village of Tocco. For the purpose of receiving grant funding for the New York State Department Environmental Conservation for Shared Recycling App. With the Village of Terrytown as the lead entity for the grant funding, subject to approval by council to the town is to form.
Motion? So the town continues to participate in this consortium of communities to offer the recycle rate app to our residents. And we also therefore receive a share of the grant funding. We're grateful to the Village of Terrytown for being the lead applicant. And we're also excited that the Village of Austin will also be taking this on for the next year. Making it much easier for our residents in the town and village of Austin to understand all of the great. Opportunities that they have with the recycle rate app to figure out what's going on, how to get rid of all sorts of types of refuse. And recycling and how to make, do whatever you can to use it, to put it into its best. End of life use, I guess you could say. So we're happy for the grant and that it reduces our costs to offer this great app. App to our residents. All those in favor?
Should the resolution say twenty twenty-two?
It's, I think this is for twenty twenty-one.
One, because they're applying, like it's all backwards with the grant. Yeah, it's twenty twenty-one. Thank you though.
Thanks. All those in favor? Anybody opposed?
He memorandum of understanding Hudson River Valley Greenway resolved at the town board of the town of Austin. Authorizes the supervisor to sign a memorandum of understanding with the Hudson River Valley Greenway for the purpose of receiving ten thousand dollars in Greenway Compact Grant Funding. For an open space preservation plan for the town of Austin for a period of two years following date of execution, subject to approval by council to the town is to form.
Motion?
Second.
So we're very excited to have learned last week that we had been awarded a ten thousand dollar grant from the Hudson River Valley Greenway. To support our open space preservation plan. This goes along with what we've been hearing from all of our feedback during our comp plan input sessions. And we're grateful to Valerie Manostra, also to Millennium Strategies and to Victoria Cafarelli for working on this grant. And this resolution authorizes the contract to be signed, so we can get the process started very soon. Any questions or discussion? All of them there?
Okay, cancellation of December twenty eighth, twenty twenty-one regular meeting. Be resolved at the town board hereby canceled its legislative session scheduled for December twenty eighth, twenty twenty-one.
Motion? So with the holidays coming up and staff vacations, we decided to cancel our December twenty-eighth regular meeting. Our last meeting of the year will be next week's town hall meeting and we will be back for twenty twenty-two on January fourth with a work session. We also wanted to give Councilman Wiltshire one fewer meeting for the year. We didn't want, we, we wanted to, him to not have to suffer through that one last meeting.
Right.
Not suffer. He loves them. You love them. You know it. Okay. Do we have a motion from Councilman Wiltshire? Oh, we had a motion already in a second. Okay. All those in favor? And of course, Councilwoman Shaw is also benefiting from this as her last meeting will be on the twenty-first. Okay. Thank you.
Resolution formally accepting McCarthy Drive as a town road, whereas McCarthy Drive is approximately two thousand foot road in the unincorporated town of Austin. Where since the nineteen seventies, the town highway department has employed following McCarthy Drive and filling potholes and conducting road repairs on McCarthy Drive. And whereas in twenty sixteen and twenty seventeen, the town conducted its own independent investigation that revealed deed to tax subs indicating McCarthy Drive is owed by the town. And whereas the town has undergone, undertaken a large scale rehabilitation and water main replacement project from McCarthy Drive. Which is currently actively ongoing and now therefore be resolved, the town board hereby accepts McCarthy Drive as a town road.
Second.
So the town receives funding from the state for road maintenance. And the calculation of the town's share of funding is based upon our miles of roadway. Our highway superintendent found out that McCarthy Drive had not yet been included in that calculation. Even though it was determined that McCarthy Drive has been a town on roadway for many years. This resolution formally accepts McCarthy Drive as a town road so that we have the supporting documentation to add the mileage to our calculation. For state funding, which we like, because then we'll get some more. And we'll be able to do a better job of keeping up such roads as the one that we're improving to town standard slash McCarthy Drive. All those in favor? Hi. Anybody opposed? Thanks.
Taxer sheary five, five hundred twenty-nine North State Associates versus town of Austin. Whereas proceedings pursuant to Article seven of the real property tax law of the state of New York. Were instituted by North State Associates against the town of Austin, New York, to review the tax assessments made on petitioner's property located. At five hundred twenty-nine North State Road in the town of Austin, New York, ten five six two. And designated a tax assessment map of the town of Austin in section ninety point fifteen, ninety-seven point fifteen, block one, law thirty-six. For tax assessment years twenty sixteen to twenty twenty, which proceedings are now pending on the Supreme Court of, of the state of New York County of Westchester. Whereas the above petition has agreed. whereas the above petitioner has agreed to compromise and settlement of such proceedings, subject to the approval of the town board correcting and reducing the assessed valuation of its real property and improvements as follows. Now therefore, it is resolved that settlement of the proceedings on the terms set forth here and is hereby accepted and approved, subject to the approval of the Supreme Court, Westchester County, wherein such proceedings are pending.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
So this resolution and the next six are for taxor shearries. Although these resolutions are very long, the refund amounts associated with these properties are fairly low for the town. This is largely due to the fact that in the town, we've maintained our role at full market value, um which I think we heard about from our assessor just last meeting, making these cases much more challenging for commercial property owners to argue on merit. So we thank our assessor Fernando Gonzalez and his team, as well as Town Prosecutor Steve Dewey for moving these cases along and limiting the towns and all of the other jurisdictions refunds. Uh.
Sorry, I just had that benefit of the public, the only portions of the resolution, as the supervisor mentioned, are are being read this evening. But um they are the entirety of the resolution with the pertinent terms related to each tax cert settlement are available on the town's website, as well as the town supervisor's office and the town clerk's office.
Thank you for that clarification. So all those in favor of tax cert number one?
Aye.
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 Anybody opposed?
Okay, taxer sheary N G Realty Company LLC versus Town of Austining, whereas proceedings pursuant to Article Seven of the Real Property Tax Law of the State of New York were instituted by N G Realty Company LLC against the Town of Austin to review the tax assessments made on petitioner's property located at two hundred thirty-eight North North Highland Avenue, Town of Austining, and designated on the tax assessment map of the Town of Austining a section eighty-nine point eleven, block one, lot ten, for the tax assessment years, the dozen and eight to the dozen and fifteen, which proceedings are now pending in the Supreme Court of the State of New York County of Westchester, whereas the above petitioner has agreed to compromise and settlement of such proceedings, subject to the approval of the town board, correcting and reducing the assessed valuation of the real property and improvements as follows. Now therefore, it is resolved that settlement of the proceedings on the terms set forth here and is hereby accepted and approved, subject to the approval of the Supreme Court, Westchester County, wherein such proceedings are pending.
All those in favor?
Up motion.
Aye.
Let me, oh, I didn't take a motion yet. I thought I did.
Not for this one now.
All right, sorry. Motion?
So moved.
Second.
I hope those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Thank you. Sorry. I'll try to remember.
It's okay. They all look the same. Yeah, uh taxer sheary, okay, Cafe of Westchester Incorporated, A I F A TAF LLC versus Town of Austining, whereas proceedings pursuant to Article Seven of the Real Property Tax Law of the State of New York were instituted by Okay Cafe of Westchester Incorporated, A I F A T A F LLC against all Town of Austin in New York to review the tax assessment made on petitioner's property located on two sixty-five South Highland Avenue in the Village of Barcliff, Manor, New York, ten-five-ten, and the Town of Austin in New York, ten-five-six-two, and designated on the tax assessment map of the Town of Austining a section ninety-seven point one-five, block four, lot ten, for tax assessment years twenty-sixteen to twenty-nineteen, which proceedings are now pending in the Supreme Court of the State of New York County of Westchester, whereas the above petitioner has agreed to a compromise and settlement of such proceedings, subject to the approval of the town board correcting and reducing the assessed valuation of its real property and improvements as follows. Now therefore, it is resolved that settlement of the proceedings on the terms set forth here and is hereby accepted and approved, subject to the approval of Supreme Court, Westchester County, wherein such proceedings are pending.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Taxer sheary Copple Court condominium versus Town of Austining, whereas proceedings pursuant to Article Seven of the Real Property Tax Law of the State of New York were instituted by Copple Court condominium against the Town of Austin in New York to review the tax assessments made on petitioner's property located at one dash sixty-seven Copple Court in the Village of Barcliff, Manor, New York, one oh five-ten, in the Town of Austin in New York, ten-five-six-two, and designated on the tax assessment map of the Town of Austining a section ninety-eight point zero-six, block three, lots fifty-five point slash zero-zero-one through fifty-five slash zero zero-zero-six-six for tax assessment years twenty-sixteen to twenty-twenty-one. Proceedings are now pending in the Supreme Court of the State of New York County of Westchester, whereas the above petitioner has agreed to compromise and settlement of such proceedings, subject to the approval of the town board, correcting and reducing the assessed valuation of the real property and improvements as follows. Now therefore, it is resolved that settlement of the proceedings of the terms set forth here and is hereby accepted and approved, subject to subject to the approval of the Supreme Court, Westchester County, wherein such proceedings are pending.
Motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Okay, just give me one second. Let me jump to the page. Okay, on page nineteen, um taxer sheary Denton Builders Incorporated versus Town of Austining, whereas proceedings pursuant to Article Seven of the Real Property Tax Law of the State of New York were instituted by Denton Builders Incorporated against the Town of Austin in New York, ten-five-six-two, to review the tax assessments made on petitioner's property located at one twenty-seven Woodside Avenue in the Village of Barcliff, Manor, New York, one oh five-ten, in the in the Town of Austin in New York, ten-five-six-two, and designated on the tax assessment map of the Town of Austining a section ninety-eight point ten, block two, lot fifty-four for tax assessment years twenty-nineteen to twenty-twenty, which proceedings are now pending in the Supreme Court of the State of New York County of Westchester, whereas the above petitioner has agreed to compromise and settlement of such proceedings, subject to the approval of the town board correcting and reducing the assessed valuation of its real property and improvements as follows. Now therefore, it is resolved that settlement of the of the proceedings on the terms set forth here and is hereby accepted and approved, subject to approval of the Supreme Court, Westchester County, wherein such proceedings are pending.
Motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Taxer sheary to Hamlet on Spring Pond condominium versus Town of Austining, whereas proceedings pursuant to Article Seven of the Real Property Tax Law of the State of New York were instituted by the Hamlet on Spring Pond condominium against the Town of Austin in New York to review the tax assessments made on petitioner's property located at one dash eighty-one Spring Pond Drive in the Town of Austin in New York, ten-five-six-two, and designated on the tax assessment map of the Town of Austin in Section eighty point twenty, block one, lots ten slash zero-zero-one through ten slash zero-zero-eighty-one for tax assessment years twenty-sixteen to twenty-twenty-one, which proceedings are now pending in the Supreme Court of the State of New York County of Westchester, whereas the above petitioner has agreed to a compromise and settlement of such proceedings, subject to the approval of the town board, correcting and reducing the assessed valuation of its real property and improvements as follows. Now therefore, it is resolved that settlement on the proceedings on the terms set forth here and is hereby accepted and approved, subject to the approval of the Supreme Court, Westchester County, wherein such proceedings are pending.
Motion?
So moves.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Okay.
Uh, second, as I scroll down.
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one. Thank you. P. Taxer sheary Jefferson House Associates versus Town of Austining, whereas proceedings pursuant to Article Seven of the Real Property Tax Law of the State of New York instituted by Jefferson House Associates against the Town of Austin in New York to review the tax assessments made on petitioner's properties located at one fifty-one South Highland Avenue, se- uh seventy-one Charter Circle and eighty-one Charter Circle, the Village of Austining and the Town of Austin in New York, ten-five-six-two, and designated on the tax assessment map of the Town of Austining, Section ninety-seven point eleven, block four, lot thirty-three, and also Section ninety-seven point one-five, block three, lot thirty-two, and also Section ninety-seven point one-five, block three and lot thirty-three, respectively, for tax assessment years twenty-twenty and twenty-twenty-one, which proceedings are now pending in the Supreme Court of the State of New York County of Westchester, whereas the above petitioner has agreed to compromise and settlement of such proceedings, subject to the approval of the town board, correcting and reducing the assessed valuation of its real property and improvements as follows. Now therefore, it is resolved uh that settlement of the proceedings on the terms set forth here and is hereby accepted and approved, subject to the approval of the Supreme Court, Westchester County, wherein such proceedings are pending.
Motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in here.
Aye.
All right.
Uh correspondence we received and filed resolved at the town board of the town of Austin hereby accepts the following correspondence to Town Planning Board um October sixth, twenty-twenty-one, and October twenty is twenty-twenty-one and resolution of approval Armstrong Plumbing and Heating, five ninety-three North State Road. And it's just an amended, it's Town Town Planning Board minutes. There you go.
Okay.
Yes.
As amended, do I have a motion? First of all.
Second, as amended.
Thank you. Uh first of all, I want to just say yee-haw that we got to correspondence to be received and filed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Okay.
Okay, uh monthly reports resolved that the town board of the town of Austin hereby accepts the following monthly reports for the month of November twenty-twenty-one, Yale Cemetery, G E Helicopter, Highway Department Supervisor's Office, Tax Receiver and Town Clerk.
Motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? And we are up to favorite section of the evening, visitor recognition on any items whatsoever. Do you have any items whatsoever from our public? Raise your virtual hand if you do. Okay, Mr. Minagio, we have nothing from you this evening. I'm calling you out. Thank you for attending. We're looking forward to you being part of this uh board in the very near future. Sorry.
I said, I'm sure I have planned to say next year.
Yes, you will. I'm sure you will, too. He's holding his breath. Okay, so with that, um I would ask for a motion to adjourn to executive session for advice of council, contracts and personnel.
So moved.
Tech.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Have a great week, everybody. Remember to fill those boxes with toys and gifts and coats and hats and gloves. Um it's, we're in that giving season, and uh please think of think of others when when you can. And uh we will see you all next week at our last meeting of the year. And we will be taking a little, a few moments to honor some of our outgoing uh village or uh town council members. So I look forward to seeing you then. And if you didn't get a chance to say some wonderful words about um Mr. Wiltshire or Ms. Shaw, you will be able to do so then. All right, so we look forward to seeing you all. How, did I take a motion? Did everybody, did we vote on this adjournment? Yes, we did. Okay, fantastic. Have a great night, everybody.
Good night.